Approve the tentative budget because you can ask questions. And I encourage you because anytime you want to meet to discuss the budget, my process, and how we came to this before that time. So we'll approve the tentative budget. You have to post the budget for a month, and then we'll officially adopt it in September. So... So really, what is a budget? It really just includes your staff salary and benefits and all materials you need to function for the school year. The main point of our budget is broken down to our different sort of funds. So the operating funds consist of everything we need to really operate our facility. The education fund is salaries, supplies. Operations and maintenance is what we need to run our facility. Custodial service, all of our construction projects. Transportation. The IMRF social security is for our pension obligation on behalf of the district. And the working cash really just acts as our savings fund. So other types of funds, these are a little bit more fluidity here. Capital projects, we've used that the last two years based on our referendum work. Debt service is anything that we borrow, we have to pay back. So technology leases, different sort of long-term borrowing obligations that we have, such as our referendum money. And then toward life safety are both used for legal bills and then approved safety projects. So we generally haven't used toward life safety too much in the most recent years. So again, broken down by the operating funds, these are really our main revenues and expenditures, I'm predicting. So keep in mind, I budget very conservatively. And I want to thank all the administrators who were part of the budgeting process. Just a reminder, we use a zero-based budgeting process. So I have every different department that's here that is broken down by account code, what they think they're going to spend. They'll justify all the spending to me, and we'll collaboratively come up with these estimations. So I'm projecting a surplus, sorry, a deficit of about seventy, seven hundred to eight hundred thousand dollars this year. And I'll explain to you kind of when I go over our historical numbers while I'm confident that we are going to still beat that large deficit that I'm projecting right now. It'll still leave us with a healthy thirteen million dollar fund balance based on these projections. So this is really a history of our operating fund surplus and deficit, where we're going to end up. You can see the last six years, we've had very, very large surpluses. And we've historically projected deficits in those years. We try to be conservative, under promise and over deliver when it comes to our budget. Last year, really happy that our unaudited numbers come back, about six hundred and ten thousand dollar surplus in our operating funds. So that'll be the sixth year in a row of having a surplus. And that's really just to build up our fund balance and help us with a lot of our long-term facility goals. So for the upcoming budget, I'm projecting about seven hundred thousand dollar deficit. And then over the next few years, I'm varying with little surpluses and small deficits. And I always project out five years. And as just a reminder, whenever you go out, farther you go, the less accurate coming your budget presentation, budget projections. So I always update those regularly. This is snapshot as far as what I feel like our fund balance, beginning and ending balances are going to be. And the far right number, you can see, that's the fund balance to expenditure ratio. That's really what I'm mainly concerned with when I'm talking about, our fund balance. How much reserves do we have to fund our future expenses? So based on just the operating funds, projecting a seventy-four percent fund balance expenditure ratio, which means we could last three quarters of the year without actually getting new revenue. Again, why do we have a fund balance? We have a new evidence-based funding model that's taking place. It started last year, and we're still in the early stages of that funding formula. So we're still hoping the payments come in on time. Last year, they did. But with all of our other state and federal payments, the payments are often delayed by months. So a lot of times, you get two of our four payments in, and we gotta wait the next year to get two of the four payments. And so we're always a few payments behind when it comes to some of our state payments. And then, as always, there's a state obligation. The state's pension share may fall back on the district. It's been talked about for a long time. We're still not sure that's exactly going to happen. But that's the biggest, one of the biggest outlying expenses that we may incur. So you break down really a little bit of the revenues by fund, just broken down by taxes, our tuition and other fees that we have, and then state and federal sources. So the next slide really just shows how reliant we are on property taxes. About seventy-four percent of our revenue that we expect this year to come in property taxes, followed by general state aid, which is represented by the purple column there. And that's the evidence-based funding model that I was just talking about.
Excuse me, sir?
Yeah?
Just explain evidence-based funding versus what it was before.
Yeah, so the general state aid formula before was really reliant on enrollment data and average daily attendance when it came to student days. So getting butts in the seat, that helped us get more revenue. There was a report that we did just called the General State Aid Plan, and we'd just report all that demographic information. They'd run it through their formula and say, you know what? Yeah, this many students, this many attendance days, we feel it's going to cost X amount per student. Here's your general state aid money. So the evidence-based funding formula is, in theory, it's a good thing, but there's still, instead of using students and attendance days, there are about twenty-six other factors that go into that. So student-teacher ratios, a lot of your resource teachers, things like that. I'll be happy to kind of share some of our literature about that. There would be a two-hundred-slide presentation based on that alone. But it complicated the formula in such a way that it does use more measurable data, which for us, anytime you get more data, it's usually a good thing. But they're still figuring out their ratios and formulas as well. How much does it mean if you only have one psychologist in your district? What's that worth? So the point is to give you more money to use towards those resources and hiring other staff. So they're basically telling you how many kids you need, how much resources you should have for that group of students. So that's really the crux of the formula. But for us, we fall in Tier Two formula, which means we're underfunded according to their, they say, you need this much money to fund a school district. The state gives you this much money, so you have what's called an adequacy gap. And that gap alone will tell you, it tells the district, sorry, the state, hey, this district doesn't have enough money based on the state's contribution to them, based on the local property taxes, so we're going to give them more money. So the district's benefited with the new funding formula. We've gotten more money over the past year or two. So it's helped us out, and we're going to continue to support it. And there's just new reports you have to do, a new way to get our contributions. So it's helped us out the past few years. Sorry, that was a long explanation.
No, no.
It's a, it's a very new formula that they use. It's more complex than the last one. I still refer to it as general state aid because that's what it's been called for years. So the district's held to the PTEL formula, which is the Property Tax Extension Limitation Law. That just means the district's capped by CPI plus new property. I'll go over that more in detail when we do our budget presentation, our levy presentation in the winter. But CPI was two-point-one percent. We're projecting about one-point-two million dollars in new property, which is not very much, but it's, we've had a small influx of new property over the last few years. And just state and federal grants are being held relatively flat right now. Similar to expense, revenues, we have, the expenses are broken down by our main categories here. Salaries, benefits, purchase services, which would be any subscriptions that we buy, our technology companies that we subscribe to, supplies. Capital outlay will be our new facility projects that we're going to be doing this, that we're going to be spending out of this year's budget. Capital equipment, which is equipment that's between five hundred and two thousand dollars. And then other is tuition and some other loose payments that we're going to have to do. This shows you what our FY nineteen budget is, what our actuals, our unaudited actuals came in at, and what I'm projecting our budget to be. So our salaries make up over half of our budget, with our benefits making up another twelve percent. So a large part of our, part of our budget is made up of just our teachers and administrators and other classified staff, the rest of it being purchase services. We do subscribe to a lot of the services that really has helped our district out tremendously in the last few years. It just talks about just what my assumptions went into, the major assumptions that went into this budget, both of it being referendum and facility work that we're still finishing off. And we're also going to be buying some new technology upgrades to go along with our facility work, so access points, switches, things that really will help improve our bandwidth and our internet reliability. And last, just to show you our timeline, so I mentioned at the next meeting, we're going to approve the tentative budget for display. Means I'll post it in the paper. We'll post it online and in our office for thirty days. And it's set to be approved at a budget hearing on the twenty-fourth. So I'm sorry, I'll have to go through a similar presentation at that time. So you guys always hear this usually twice a year, but we need to post, approve it Friday to September thirtieth, and then we'll post. Are there any questions right now?
You mentioned purchase services, about two million dollars. Can you just give a couple of examples?
And so the purchase services, the other was two million, the purchase services was about, oh, no, I'm sorry, that was two million dollars. So this consists of our operating funds. Our biggest purchase service is transportation. So essentially, hey, we hired, outsourced a company for transportation. We outsourced a custodial company. As a reminder, this is our first year with a new transportation company. We now have Lakeside, had Durham in the last few years. So our costs are going to remain relatively stable with Lakeside. But over the last few years, transportation costs skyrocketed, and that's mostly due to our special education routes. We have to cab more kids. We have more outplayed students that we placed in CEDOL programs. That's a really high cost to transport a few kids. And also, purchase services includes tuition costs to CEDOL and other programs like that. So those always jump, and they're really fluid each year, but we've had a large increase in costs. So transportation makes up about one-point-three million dollars of that. If there's any questions between now and the next meeting, don't hesitate to call me, and I'll, you know, if you have to schedule a meeting, walk you through some of my, some of the more detailed items on that. But some of the attachments goes a little bit more of the line item detail if you're interested. And also, I do projections by fund over the next five years. Okay, I'll start getting those.
Hey, Eric, I want to ask you about anticipating, you know, some questions and answers from the community. How are we going to be able to manage that? You know, I'd like to say that you'd be in front and center to be able to really truly explain this in case anyone in the community wants more details.
Yeah.
Any thoughts about between now and when the budget's presented and the public hearing?
Yeah, no, great question. In the past, we haven't had too many people that have attended our public hearing. And, you know, at the time, I really don't get any questions anyway. Over the years, I've had a couple of people that have asked, hey, can you walk me through a little bit more of what we're purchasing, why we're purchasing that? And I generally like to handle those on an individual basis. It's kind of hard to, you know, have that communication at a public hearing like this, where you can actually sit down and see the documents in front of them. So I like to handle this really as an open book. I'll show everybody the same documents that we're using. Everything that we've had for you guys tonight has been presented for the public to pack it. So we'd be as transparent as possible when it comes to public.
And to add to that, obviously, if we walk in and duel or whatever, and someone approaches us, is it okay for us to refer them to you?
Absolutely. Yeah, I totally encourage that because then that way I can give them, you know, the information. A lot of times, it gets passed around the community. So a lot of times, it's, hey, why are you purchasing this? Well, here's the reason why. And that way, I could bring Eric Hansen if we need to talk about technology, or Steven comes to some of the curricular items. So that's why we have such a small, tight-knit office. I encourage you definitely to pass by.
That's a good segue for us to really contribute to the community. And I anticipate that's going to happen once or twice.
Yeah.
Thanks.
No, I totally. All right, thank you.
For the 2019, 2020, and 2020, 2021 school years, may I have a motion to approve, please? Kwan, yes? Candela?
Yes.
Armenta? Hale?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Lozada?
Yes.
Sullivan. Okay, moving on to the press policies. I don't know if you guys have a chance to take a look at the documents yet? Or if anyone had any questions or wants to discuss? The format of this, I think, looks a lot better than as everybody was talking about. It's really easy to read.
Seem like we clarified just some ambiguity and some terminology, eliminating a lot of verbiage and just really focusing in.
So all the, you know, the things that are highlighted and that are, they're sitting out, and then, you know, the plan is what they're updating, whatever, so, okay, this is our language. So it's really nice with the update that, so for Margaret and Jose, it sounded that about six months ago, we were updating the ISPE board policies to Press Plus. So now we have it available electronically. Before, we would manually, Daisy would have to manually put in all the updates so you can move them. So this is really nice, the way to check out.
Yeah, and the heck that we'd get to read was huge compared to this. So this is really nice. If nobody has any comments or discussion, we can move on, and we will be voting on that at our next meeting on August sixth. Moving on to the lawn care contract. It resolved that the Diamond Lake Seventy-Six Board of Education accepts and approves recommendations to approve Countryside Industries as a lawn and grounds contractor for the 2019, 2020 through 2021, 22 school years at a total cost of thirty-nine thousand nine-hundred-and-sixty dollars per year. May I have a motion to approve?
Move. Second?
Lozada?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Armenta?
Hale? Yes.
Candela?
Yes.
Kwan? Yes. Moving on to the meal prices. I don't know, Eric, did you want to comment at all on that?
The meal prices?
Before we vote, or?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. So meal prices, there's an ISPE workshop, work tool that you use, a worksheet that you use as far as what we can charge as a minimum price. So we'll take a look at the past costs, what the district's made in revenue, and it'll spit out, hey, you've charged at least this much money. So in talk of our new food service company, Quest, we've been looking at the cost per meal from them versus the cost that ISPE reimburses us for. So we were recommending a very slight increase of ten cents, because to be honest with you, if we increased it to fifty cents, it's not going to matter, or a dollar, it's not going to matter. The most money we give is from the state in terms of our reimbursement. So I wanted to see a nominal increase that will help offset a very, very little amount of cost. I didn't want to impact the paid students quite as much, because we only get about five thousand dollars of revenue a year from paid kids. So really, just a nominal increase. I will point out, the biggest change we're going to have next year is the breakfast in the classroom. There'll be a lot of information that'll come out about that. And we're going to be giving breakfast to each student in the school going forward next year. So that number for breakfast is not going to impact anybody because we'll be providing a free meal.
Oh, for every student?
For every student. So that is going to be the biggest initiative that we're going to be doing pretty much next year, besides our food program. So every student, regardless of whether it's free, paid, or reduced, is going to get a meal. The district is charged a hundred, a dollar sixty-five for each meal. We get reimbursed two-eighteen, I think it's two-eighteen a meal. So we get reimbursed more than the cost, which helps offset the costs that we wouldn't, that we don't get reimbursed for our paid students. So we're about, you know, sixty-five percent free and reduced.
Yeah.
So really, the breakfast is going to be in that zero program when it comes to all the revenue.
How does that work with, like, food allergies?
Good question. We'll have to take all the allergy information into account, but it's really just going to be, it's going to be a cold breakfast.
Okay.
So it's going to be cereals, yogurts, milks, fruits, things like that.
Okay.
There's not going to be a hot breakfast item. So there's always going to be an ax stock of some item that that student could eat.
Okay.
So Quest is very big on, you know, all allergy information, things like that. Correct, yeah, the student is not a problem.
Yeah, I just was thinking, though, that if you have a class of, you know, twenty little kids, like, the one little kid is not going to have no breakfasts when everyone else around them is eating.
Yeah, and the best part, it's Kurt's point there, if somebody doesn't want to eat, there's going to be, you know, there's a plan in place. We just haven't formalized it yet. Hey, kids are hungry, let's give them two breakfasts.
Sure.
Things like that. We don't want to have anything go to waste.
Sure, that's very nice.
But yeah, so smaller breakfast items. But that's why that dollar forty cost I'm recommending isn't even going to come into play, but we have to formally approve something.
Sure. Obviously, ten cents more for a phone, which is really impressive, I think, because
Yeah, exactly. And this is a new account for them, being a national school lunch program, where usually they're charging four, four-fifty, something like that for these types of meals. But because we get reimbursed so much from the state, we don't have to.
That's great. Does anyone else have a question?
Eric, in essence, at lunch, no kid really goes hungry, because you have the three different programs to offer them to cover for that night.
Correct, yeah. You're eating breakfast no matter what. If you're a paid kid, you still do have to pay for your meal if you're paid. But yeah, all the reduced and free kids will still have their meals at no cost or a small amount. So we're really good at promoting this program, because the more kids we have on it, the better it is for us.
Sure. Thanks.
And we'll come and keep that out, you know, if we're back to school in the coming year, and parents know what to order and how often to order.
So there will be a bunch of information being sent home next week from Ms. Vetter. So she's going to be in charge of sending out a lot of that literature, introducing Quest, introducing our partnership with District Thirty. But more importantly, there's some logistical changes they have to do. You have to order meals online, order so many days in advance, because anytime you purchase food. So it's going to be a change for a lot of families, but it's going to be this automated process online. It's going to work pretty well.
You think they had asked you about that before? So do we just over-order every day in case a kid didn't order?
We do. They have enough, enough meals that they're going to, they anticipate this every day. We have to, we have to encourage people to order three days in advance.
Sure.
But we can't force it to a certain extent. There's always going to be extra food.
And for the paid kids, if they order and don't eat, are they charged?
You know, that's a great question. We did bring that up at one point, but I don't know if I ever got an answer.
I know they do that at some other schools, but those schools are, have a much smaller lunch program than we do, so I assume that that factors in.
Yeah, I think they did answer it.
I think, I remember really that if a child is ill, they don't get charged for it. If a child ordered it and then comes to school and then he doesn't eat lunch, that might, I don't know if it's different.
I guess I would, I would ask, like, how would you enforce that? Like, how would you make?
It's awfully hard.
Like, it sounds like logistically it would be complicated for us.
To be able to reimburse them if they didn't eat, you're talking about?
Well, so then, do you, if you're a paid student, then do you pay in advance?
Yes.
Okay.
Everything's paid upfront. So that's the new, that'll be the change for the paid students. You can order a month in advance. You'll look at the menu online, click whatever you want, and then it'll just give you an invoice at the end. So you just check while you check it out.
Okay, so then if you don't eat it, that makes sense. But if you were sick, then do you just get a credit?
Yes, yeah, we will talk to, we have a dedicated full-time food service director. So it splits time between us and District Thirty. She's in charge of doing all this stuff. It's really nice that we have a point of contact to answer all those questions. But yeah, absolutely, if they're sick, they're not going to be charged.
You can actually order and pair them up in the credit bank.
Yeah, we can just able to credit them.
I thought she said.
Okay.
So for now, we're going to have one option to start off with, and then we're going to pair that into, you know, multiple options for when you can see your start. So we'll go back to the two-option format.
And for the kids that aren't free or receive lunch, do you just automatically order their meals, or are they going to have to actually order?
They order it, when they check out, it'll show zero balance for them.
Okay.
So they still do need to check out, because otherwise, they don't know. I mean, they're making this food from scratch, so.
Sure, I'm just wondering if there might be, like, a learning part that, you know, where it takes a while to kind of get up and running.
Chris, and Kurt, and Julianne have all came up with some good ideas as far as any kiosks available, or some sort of device available for parents.
Ladies, help, you know, families out.
Yeah.
Just so you look for registration, come on in, we'll help you, you know, order your lunch for the month, whatever.
And I, by setting up the, sorry to chime in, but setting this up as well, there is, you could order all students there, get free lunch. You could order them all in a mass, too, for the entirety, if you wanted to.
Do they do it a year?
For each day, for each day. So if you, if you want.
Oh, are you saying if you would? Okay.
Yeah. Sorry, I'm resorting to this thing, to this thing.
And then another feature that I think is, it will be probably more used at the middle school. Once the children gain an appreciation of the food service because of the quality, they can actually, if they're not on the free and reduced list, they can actually order a double entree. So if it's, let's say, I'm going to have a hamburger, and they like it, they want two hamburgers, they can actually do that. But if they're on free and reduced, then they get the meal, but then they are charged the entree price for if they want a second. And a lot of middle school kids are hungry and how late.
I do want to ask, I think you guys hinted at it, I don't know what percentage of the community may not have access to online. So anticipating that, I think the kiosk idea is good. Anything else that you're going to send home as an alternative way for them to, you know, either go to, I don't know, wherever, or come to the school to be able to sign up their child? I know not everyone may have one, that's why.
I know. A lot of them, a lot of our families do use their phone.
Okay.
We find for Power School.
Okay.
And we offer a lot of information and assistance, and we send home with Mr. Hanson. We try to communicate as best we can. We will, we will do our darnest to make sure kids eat, bottom line, kids eat.
Now, you want to make sure that it's in your documentation that you're sending home, that blast, that people know that if they have a hindrance, not being able to get online consistently, that these are the conduits, the vehicles that they can use to.
Yeah, and that's a good point. I think it is, administrative team, we could probably talk to social workers and see if there is a consistent set of families. Because, you know, if it's a small minority of people, we could probably, you know, arrange secretaries to assist with those ordering on a pretty regular basis, so that's a good point.
Yeah, and they could order.
If you have a choice, you could just order for all the kids.
Correct. Free. You can.
Yes.
Free, yes, free.
You could, but yeah, then just making sure that they're intending to eat.
Sure.
Because it wouldn't be charged those meals.
Sure.
Yeah, and they can, they don't have to order for, like, the next few days. They can order the entire month, because the calendar will display there. So then, they'll be ready, they can, they could do it once a month if they really wanted to.
And you have that data, Mr. Hanson has data on how families want to get their communication, whether it's by phone or by email, and or their laptop. And so teachers, then we just reach out to teachers and say, cool, in your class, so you can't access that information, and then we just target them personally.
So thirty days is the minimum number of days out where you can order the lunch? So I have an emergency tomorrow, and I can't send my kid lunch. There's no way that I can?
Three.
Three is the minimum?
Three days?
Yeah, thirty is the maximum if you're order. So, but to your point, that and with the, there's a certain percentage, does it want to over-supply everybody to eat? Yeah, that would be a problem.
Yeah, and we're also, we're always going to have, even if we extended that quantity, there's always going to be a stock of dry goods if they can eat the meal. There's always going to be a fruit-vegetable bar. There's always going to be, you know, some breakfast items, yogurts, stuff like that, that we can make a meal if for some reason we ran out of all that. So there's, there's contingency plans in place.
And one last question. Think of the measure of success. Obviously, having more students and the families ordering online at the end of the cycle, thirty days, forty-five days, ninety days, you can reflect on that data. What else would you target as knowing that this is, this is very successful?
It's a great question. So first thing Quest really did was have a student peer group come in, and they reviewed the food. come in, and they reviewed the food. Mr. Wilford brought in, was it like ten or fifteen kids? We had our wellness team who was part of that program as well. So I think really just getting student feedback, is this, you know, how is this meal compared to previous years? They really took some of that student feedback, you know, only one day's worth, but they crafted a couple items on the menu based on that. So Quest's biggest attribute, I think, is their communication and their collaborative work. The president comes in and does it, it's not some person that's buried in the company somewhere, the president comes and he'll, he'll do taste tests with students and really gather feedback. So I think just getting some of that verbal and written receptiveness from the students on how they feel about their meals if they've been ordered to us, because we just don't want to keep forcing them.
Right.
That's what we'd be doing with preferred, here's your options, this is, this is what somebody in corporate is, is providing us, but we have a person who's crafting a menu each month from scratch.
We actually kept track of the orders, I don't know all of the literature, but we have a little spreadsheet, because we were curious how many of our middle schoolers were eating, and we can go back and look at that and just compare whether it's, if they were in fifth grade now, we'll get sixth grade, you know, that type of thing. The other thing that I think is going to be really neat is, we've always encouraged children to eat breakfast, and a lot of children, I think, wanted to, but they don't want to, they don't, they want to socialize, they don't want to miss their friends, they don't want to sit in the lunchroom and do it in the morning. I think when we count the number of bags that are left that we've put out, that gives us an indication as well. So I think there's some numerical ways to do it on top of just surveys.
Yeah, our breakfast participation is going to go from forty a day to nine hundred a day. It's, it's gonna, it's going to be pretty cool just to see, and not every student may want it, but somebody's going to want to eat the food and they're gonna, I think just the community is really going to appreciate.
Yeah, no doubt.
We see it at summer school, when the kids come in off the bus, and we provide a morning cold breakfast, and then a lot of times they'll take it and they bag it themselves, and then they go to the classroom, some eat it right away, some eat it as a snack, and then on the way out or right before we leave, we provide them with a healthy snack as well. And, and I, I think almost every child really likes to take a snack.
Any more questions, comments? Okay, then, be it resolved, the Diamond Lake School District Seventy-Six Board of Education approves the following meal rates for the 2019-2020 school year. Breakfast, one dollar forty cents full price, thirty cents reduced price. Lunch, three dollars full price, forty cents reduced price. Milk, thirty cents. May I have questions?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Condola?
Yes.
Armenta?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to personnel. Be it resolved, the Diamond Lake Seventy-Six Board of Education, except and approved the personnel items as depicted on the agenda, we have two new hires and one leave of absence. May I have a mission for group?
So move.
Second? Yes.
Rosetta?
Yes.
Armenta?
Yes.
Condola?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes.
Okay, that concludes our business agenda, moving on to board discussion.
So there's just a couple, a few items, I should say, that are really located under board discussion, and two of them have attachments in them. First one is a memo from Dr. Terraca outlining the reasons that we are changing our assessment system from MAP, which is the measure of academic progress, to the use of STAR assessments. And as you can see, just from reading it, that, you know, there has been a year-long pilot, Dr. Terraca worked with a set of teachers, and they came up with the benefits that are listed below as to why they feel that it's more beneficial to transition from MAP to STAR. It's used as a, not only a benchmark system, but a progress monitoring system, it's more aligned to high school, they're able to see growth data. So those are just the reasons why, so if there's any questions, which is, means to more as information, and we know that we have staff support, we'll be putting out communications in the fall when the students take their first assessment, and then the reasons why. Mr. Fajah, come on in, Steve.
Yeah, I mean, and I think Dr. Turner Lewis summed up the memo there nicely, so obviously, and I've had some individual conversations with someone who just recognizes that we assess students often, and our assessment calendar is robust, and so in order to maintain some reliabilities and validity within our assessment system, we figured we would no longer use MAP and then just use STAR as both a benchmarking and progress monitoring system, it's consistent, it gives us all of the data that MAP provides, but it also gives us student growth percentile, which is more closely linked to the state's formula now in terms of student growth. So it gives us, you know, all of the same usefulness that MAP provides, including nationally normed percentiles, and also just allows us to reduce the number of assessment minutes for our kids, because that, I think, is a huge positive component of the STAR assessment.
Steve, I appreciate reducing the number of assessment minutes and increasing instruction on really that. In terms of this year, while we are doing one forward for several years, is there some type of conversion to, you know, compare the baselines that we already have on students who were measured with MAP to now being measured with STAR? How, how, from, you know, a student who was in third grade last year, fourth grade this year, fifth grade next year, in terms of collecting data, either on individual students or collectively on cohorts of students?
You know, there is and there isn't, obviously, because some of it's proprietary, there's going to be some nuance to that. In terms of some of the raw data, like instructional reading level, nationally normed percentile rankings, those type of elements will transfer from one type of assessment to the other. Lexile levels, reading levels of those things, again, both of them are standard based, so those things should transfer, but I, I don't know that you're necessarily going to see the same types of instructional planning reports. So in MAP, you had something that was similar to what STAR offers, which is an instructional planning report, which gives you basically, you know, your child takes the test, they receive these scores, and you're, you're able to adapt instruction based on this data. STAR gives you that information, and it looks different than MAP, but I don't know that I can, that I can give you like a proprietary scale score correlation that would accurately jump from one to the other, and I would feel confident in saying that. What I would feel confident in saying is, your child is still ranked against the peers just like MAP is, I would still feel confident in saying Lexile levels are determined in the same manner, and I would feel confident that, you know, telling you that your grade level, reading levels, and math levels in terms of proficiency are all similar. So the reports that they provide you are quality, high quality, robust, and you'll see a lot of the similar, similar elements that you would have seen in MAP. But I can't tell you that the scale score of one forty in MAP is going to equal the scale score of eight thirty-six, and I don't have that correlation to share with you. Sorry, I got a bit wrong.
Appreciate it. So baseline starts new, but there's still these correlations.
Yeah, I mean, right, to a certain degree, we're still going to see the number of kids meeting or exceeding in terms of reading levels that are, and those reading levels will be the same, and the Lexile levels will be the same, and the national norm levels will be the same, but the, the proprietary scale scores will be different, that's the only thing. But the data that you will receive in your report will be easy to understand, and you'll be, you'll be able to see exactly where your child is in terms of proficiency and percentile ranking, which I think is a lot of what parents are looking, you want to know what level your kid is in terms of reading and that, and that will be provided to you in those reports.
Will you still be able to, like, I know in MAP right now, you can see through over here where your kid was, and I get those, that you're not going to be able to say, okay, here's your coupon, but are you able to still provide that previous MAP data so at least they could see what percentile they were, and will that be included?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, one of the things Mr. Hanson and I have been working on in the nineteen school year was that personal learner profile, which will give you a longitudinal snapshot of your child. All of the data that we are, one of the wonderful things about Alpine is that all of the data collect, that we are collecting is warehoused in Alpine, and you can see that longitudinal data over time. So when you take a look back and see MAP assessment scores, percentile ranking, instructional reading levels, you're just going to transfer that to STAR, okay? My child was in third grade last year, he had a three point five reading level, this year, the instructional reading level at a four point two, now that he or she's in fourth grade, if that makes sense. So I think the data's pretty well straightforward, so it'll allow you to transfer that.
How do parents access that data?
Through the STAR and the MAP assessments, we produce reports, and then we send those reports home.
Okay, so, but if I, as a parent, wanted to see my child's student learner profile, like, how would I be able to see that? Would I have to just come in with you to see it?
No, you wouldn't have to, but what, and you're more than, you're more than welcome, you are more than welcome to do so, but because we were in the development phase last year, we have not yet shared those.
Okay.
And so this upcoming year is when we're going to actually be able to produce those, much like you would see a report card.
Sure.
So then you'll be able to see.
Okay.
Multiple data points, yeah, and they'll be shared with you just like at progress report time and probably more rate reporting time, I would say.
Okay, and can we see, like, the next board meeting, a sample STAR report, just sample, like, what it would look like for each of the students?
Absolutely. Also, I have, I have one on my computer right now, but it has student names on it.
Sure, right. Okay.
It's good, it's, they're quality reports, though.
Okay.
And if you can include that historical, please, that's very rare, knowing that there's no loss of database.
Yeah, oh yeah, the Alpine system is, and the board has supported that, that data warehouse has really been valuable for us, so.
Great.
Margaret, you look like you were about to ask a question, so.
Can you talk about how we need to STAR reduce the assessment time?
Yeah, so in the past, MAP assessments typically took about three, you know, two to three hours depending on the length of time that the kid would need, certainly some kids would finish more. But these assessments are smaller, they're, they're adaptive, they typically have about thirty-five to forty questions on them, and on average, they take about thirty minutes, so it's pretty much reducing the assessment time a half. In the past, what we were doing is we were benchmarking three times a year, the students would take, would take the MAP assessment, and then if they were not meeting grade level proficiency, or they were needing additional minutes of instruction, we would use other assessments to sort of see where they were every six weeks, and one of the other benefits too is not only reducing those three times a year assessments, it links those three times, those benchmark assessments that take place three times a year, the little progress monitoring assessments that take throughout, that go on throughout that time, so all of those are related to STAR rather than MAP assessment and then some other form of assessment in between, sort of one continual.
Does it target the same elements, the same areas? Because with MAP, there was, there was MAP, there was language usage, there was reading comprehension.
Yeah.
I recall.
This is primarily MAP and reading, it does not have the language usage in each portion, which were most of our schools, other than West Oak, we would predominantly just focus on MAP.
So how many times would the STAR be given?
It depends on the nature or the performance level of the student. So if a student is performing at a grade level, a child would take that assessment three times a year, just like MAP, take it in fall, take it in winter, and take it again in the spring.
But just math and reading for grade?
Grades K through, K through age, typically don't start in K, but if the kids learn how to get in line first and then figure out how to assess them later on. But now, if you're not performing at grade level and you're being, and you're given some additional reading minutes or additional math minutes, an interventionist, like, let's say, you know, Erica Webb, who is our math interventionist at the middle school, would be able to take their initial benchmarking assessments that first, that fall benchmark, and then be able to every six weeks, progress monitor with the same assessment to see if they're growing. And so that just allows us a more uniform assessment, and again, helps us to reduce some of the time, because, you know, as we've talked about, there's just, you know, the IAR, the Illinois Science Assessment, F and P assessments, but, you know, if you're an English language learner, you've got several weeks of access testing, it's, it's a lot for a kid, and, you know, just speaking from the heart, it can't be great for a kid to experience the modern assessment system that we put up through. And so I've heard from teachers, I've heard from parents, I've heard from administrators in doing so, tried to find a solution that would, would, again, reduce some of those assessment minutes while still giving us reliable and valid data.
Any more, so any questions?
So, I know we initially talked when we first came together as a new group about setting these on the day, and of the, to the, to the board for school, so I thought, I'd ask a few questions, is, do we still want to do some board retreat planning? Next wish writers or goal writers are going on their leadership retreat, and so we're going to put together our nineteen, twenty goals and priorities, and then we'll bring those back to you for a draft, so that might be a good time to do some long-term planning and discussion, and see where you want, you know, see where we need to be now and for this year, but going forward. So it's just an opportunity for us, I wanted to see if we feel like we need that, if we need to do a, a long, a longer period of board retreat in addition to a meeting, and if so, when? So why, just to see, we'll see feedback on that, and then also, follow the load.
I think that would be valuable. I know we have done it in the past, it's invaluable, and I especially thank you because we have so many board members, it's a good experience to have here.
So, Mindy, what would, I've experienced that before, what probably the nature of that be?
What we did in the past was kind of goal setting and visioning, and kind of, I mean, we just wanted to wear some things, some information about the district. It was like a half day on a Saturday in my meeting today.
We came up with a vision statement. We started out working, we first did initial training with the Illinois State Board, Illinois Association of School Boards RAP came, and kind of did a self-assessment, where are we, what do we need to do, and then from there, we met and did, established a vision statement and said, okay, from that vision statement, what are the goals we want? And then that's kind of what we came up with a template of our goals and priority, and we haven't done that for four years, that was, the last time we did it was when I first started. So we thought it'd be a good time to do it now, okay? You know, we've got together a brand new board, the district has gone through kind of four years of goals and priorities of, of the same templates, is that the direction we want to continue in, or what else would we like to see?
Yeah, I think it's good to have a dedicated time set for that as opposed to a meeting like this where it's, we're trying to get through a bunch of other business.
Right. Yeah, I knew, we threw up a fix, it sounds like it would be helpful, it sounds great.
So I have any dates you want to?
So I was just going to throw out, you know, maybe Saturdays after, I was going to say like, August twenty-fourth, you know, is good for me, but I don't know what people's personal schedules are, you know, at nine in the morning, it's great, we can do, you know, when you said, anytime after, and then by that point, the DLT will have a nice framework of what our goals are, and we can come from there.
I don't do it on my schedule, we're going to carry it out.
And the following weekend's labor day, so that we can look into September, so I don't know how people's, you know, and, you know, also, not that people want to get up there Friday nights, but, you know, we feed into like a six to nine on a Friday, if that's, if those are better than Saturdays.
Okay.
So do you want, would it be better?
I mean, put in the meetings, at least your, your input and ideas should be, I think that would be applicable.
So I think what we'll do next week is we'll sit down and we're planning six hours of just doing exactly that, visioning, setting goals, you know, where do we want to be, who do we want to be, and then I would bring those back to you and say, here's what the leadership team came up with, and then from there, you can say, yes, they're totally aligned to what, where do we want to go, what we're doing here is great, we'd like to see more of this or less of this. So that's kind of where my job would be, to bridge.
Okay.
Both of those together. And then after that, maybe after both of those meetings, our vision meeting and this vision meeting, we can say, do we need an entire leadership and board to say, are we all on the same page, are we all speaking the same language?
Okay.
All right, I'll send that out sometime this week. And then the last segment, I believe, is a follow, I believe Mrs. Hill asked this question about if we can add data for the social media and just any of the electronic communications that we're sending out comparative to also with our school messenger. So Mr. Hanson put this very nice data sheet together that I'm sure he would be able to summarize for you.
I can summarize very quickly. I separate, well, and also, I'm, we're going to be adding this into Alpine as well, so it could be a lot more visually appealing, but I pulled data from the past year that's on our website, so how often people are seeing information, where they're going towards, bounce rate, as well as our social media. I just thought about that as we're talking about that, it's the school messenger data, so I could add that to this spreadsheet as well. As you mentioned, that, that was the one tab that was not in this PDF, that'll be added and I'll, I'll share it out by tomorrow.
Thank you. School messenger. Yeah, I just, because I would be curious too, just to see the click-through metrics on that, like, from now that we're consolidated into one email for the district and then the individual schools, like, how many people are opening?
Oh, absolutely. I think a lot of that data might be just whom is receiving it and who is not.
Okay.
Not their click rate, but I definitely, I'll add, I add this as a spreadsheet, I'll add another tab and share it out to everybody.
Okay.
About that pie chart, fascinating with percentage of English. It's a ninety-nine percent to one percent.
Yeah, and with.
What do you, how do you interpret?
I inter, well, when I, I, I base it, I, well, I pulled it from Google Analytics over the course of the school year only, so I was just looking at it from this year at a time. So they, they equate a lot of different, different, different languages of Spanish speaking into multitudes of different language, how, how their device is set up, but I kind of just put them together and still that's what is provided to me via Google Analytics from our website only.
But is that, the, I guess, the.
Probably the language is set up on their browser.
Views.
All the, all the, all the text will translate into the language that they're selecting based off their device, so it's based off of how their device is set up that way. So I, I think it's worth diving more into that data to see how valuable that could be. And if you're just looking at front faces of, I'm only looking at the English as opposed to translate into a different language.
So is it, I can jump on?
Yeah.
I have like a follow-up, just as a follow-up, so is that data just from the select language dropdown on the website?
Uh, it's just based off of what, how Google analyzes how audience members are viewing our website only, so I had to dive a little bit more into it.
Is it like from set up to automatically translate all their websites into Spanish? Would it pick that up?
It, it should pick, it should pick up that information. I could probably give you a lot more, more information about that. That was just one area that's in the dashboard on ours that is provided today.
Sure.
But, and so Eric, it sounds to me though that this is based on how their device is configured, so when you get a new smartphone, you select the language that you want your home screen to be portrayed in, is it even that for the devices that connect to your?
That's why I believe it's basing off of, or also geographical locations sometimes as well. It goes, it goes, I didn't share this, but it will even tell you what type of phone you're using. I mean, it'll tell you, or the operating system using on your, on your computer. So I could be a little bit more clear on that, but that's, that's how I equated it too, is based off the language selection that they're placing on their device, the audience members. And this is only our district website. That, that's just that data, that data there. That was the top one hundred pages, by the way, so there's more pages that people selected, but I know if you wanna see like three views on one page, this is buried down on the, on the site.
I think this might be good. But it's very useful.
Oh, absolutely.
Now we can see how many people are accessing all that financial data.
I wasn't gonna brag, but I'm pretty happy to pay.
The Board of Education is higher than you, which I'm surprised about.
Among the most.
Those pictures, those pictures, they keep looking at those pictures.
No, let's just be clear. Don't go into board work. Every single prime on our newsletters, we made it thirty-eight seconds solid.
That's pretty long. Does anyone else have any other questions, comments? Okay, moving on, we have no FOIA requests, notices in communications, looks like we got that letter from Bundeline telling us we're not gonna get any more tax money for those properties. Just not great news. I'm surprised at how pretty that looks. I know there was a lot of, I think, controversy in the community about doing that, but it looks very good.
Yeah, especially when you come in, was that Allen Center?
They already taken it down.
Oh yeah, it's been down for a while.
It's grass now.
It does look really nice.
Looks really pretty. By Bill's Pizza. That landmark, Bill's Pizza.
Right there. They don't serve.
Real Oscar. Okay, moving on, public comments and petitions on non-agenda items. Do we have any public comments or petitions on non-agenda items this evening? Okay, moving on to others. Looks like we have the CEDOL dates.
Yep, yep, so we just included the CEDOL governing board dates, that's the one that we go in for our board rep, so as you can see, it's four meetings once a quarter, first one's August twenty-eighth. I know Mrs. Sullivan had shared that she would want to, so now that these are official, um, it's more of an FYI and so maybe at the office, maybe we can just confirm which one.
It's a timing. Actually, maybe could we have an email sent out before then just to make sure that we have our representative there? I know that because school is starting so late, I want, I don't know if people will be on vacation anymore.
Yeah. Into the board, right?
Yeah.
Oh, wait.
No, I'm kidding.
Okay, I was like, okay, do I understand you correctly?
No, I'm just being sarcastic.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just the board, sorry.
Also, because we're starting so late, so like, should I send out a whole email to everybody who are starting early?
Well, you could.
Yeah.
I won't be doing that. Might have people show up, but I think, I think people know by now, I'm hoping.
According to the data, they do.
Yeah.
And then this is just more of an FYI, just to keep board meeting calendar and then as we update it with like special meetings or presentations or things like that, we'll just kind of add to it, but just, just so you have it, we'll just kind of keep this as a warning tab for you is the board calendar. And then we do a follow presentation, we'll do that closer to the start of the school year and the end of the summer, but again, Mr. Hanson's done a great job of taking pictures of the facility improvements, the July video will be coming out next week and so we've just kind of did a snapshot of you, you can click on it at your own leisure of just what the summer projects up to today look like. And last week's, or last month's board presentation is in there on the facility page, so you can see a lot of progress has been made.
And everything's on schedule?
So far, yes. And we have had, you know, just a few issues that have come up, but they're all within budget and within our contingencies, so nothing to make, otherwise we definitely know that by you, but yes, we're really pleased with the partnership pepper and the construction team and the contractors that they've chosen, it's been very, very professional and seamless.
That sounds good.
Very lucky. And then the last item is, we just wanna keep this on your radar, but discussions continue to happen between CEDOL and District Seventy-Six about the same Fairhaven property, so I think Eric's gonna have a little bit more detail of a report at the next board meeting, but we just kind of wanna keep that on your radar to know that it's still in progress, but nothing new to look for as of now.
Okay, so now we will move into executive session for the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of a specific employees in the district or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony on complaints lodged against an employee or against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity, and also for the purpose of collective negotiating matters between the district and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. May I have a motion to move into executive session?
Sumo? Second?
Rosada?
Yes.
Holtman?
Yes.
Armenta?
Hale? Yes.
Candela?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.